Mayor Warren.
All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the May 13th Greenville City Council. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be moderating tonight's meeting. First, I would like to call on Councilmember Meyerhofer for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to just do a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. You'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which is theirs. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, here.
Okay, Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield, and Councilmember Litchfield has informed us that he will not be joining us tonight. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Here, I'm here, you hear me?
Yes, yes, got it. Mayor Connolly, we have a call.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, are there any recommended changes?
Mayor, I do not have any recommended changes tonight.
All right. I have a motion to approve.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, five zero.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the public comment period. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at the same meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who've registered with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, first speaker is Mr. Israel Muller. Mr. Muller, you have three minutes to unmute your mic and address the city council. Mr. Muller?
Hi, good evening. I'm here as part of representing the HPC Commission and just expressing our support for a topic that will be discussed later for the anti-demolition by neglect order.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Muller. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, next speaker is Mr. Justin Edwards. Mr. Edwards, you have three minutes to unmute your mic and address the city council. Mr. Edwards? You have three minutes. I see that he's in here. You have three minutes.
Something just happened with my computer, I apologize. I'm here.
We can hear you.
Okay.
You have three minutes to address the mayor and city council.
Oh, I missed that part. My computer did some sort of refresh, I'm sorry. I don't really have anything to say, I'm just here as part of HPC to listen to the discussion.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edwards. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Okay, next speaker we have is Mr. Jeremy Jordan. Mr. Jordan, you have three minutes to unmute your mic and address the mayor and city council. Mr. Jordan, if you can hear me, you have three minutes to address the mayor and city council.
Mr. Jordan, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Sorry, as soon as you called my name, I was promoted to a panelist and everything went away, but it just came back. I'm the chair of the HPC, I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the anti-demolition by neglect ordinance, and when the item comes up, I'll be available just in case there are any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jordan. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
The next speaker is Ms. Candace Pierce. Ms. Pierce, if you can hear me, you have three minutes to unmute your mic and address the mayor and city council. I'm sorry, it seems to be a delay tonight.
Okay, you should not have appointed people who can't work their phones.
There's a reason they're on the historic preservation.
Thank you very much.
They have historic phones.
Mrs. Clerk, Madam Clerk, Valerie?
Yes, ma'am.
I really wrote something so I wouldn't have to be saying this.
I really wrote something so I wouldn't have to be saying this. I really wrote something so I wouldn't have to be saying this.
All messed up.
This is really good.
Ah, technology.
We should have these people every time.
Yeah.
Uh oh, we ran our way.
Valerie, I think she said she had written a comment to the email account, did that, maybe you can read that.
Okay, yes, I will read that too. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, please accept the resolution of this commission, item 11, and ask staff to return with an ordinance for your consideration. Very sincerely, Candace.
All right. Short and sweet. Thank you very much, Ms. Pierce. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
Mayor Connolly, that concludes the speakers that we have tonight for public comment, and I will just take a quick look at the public input inbox to see if there were comments submitted for public comment. Okay, yep, and it looks like we have not received any additional comments for public comment period.
Sounds great, thank you. We'll close the public comment period, we will move on to special recognition.
Oh, actually, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we do have one other speaker.
Open up the public comment period.
It's Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Meyer and Casper. Mr. Casper, if you would unmute your mic, you have three minutes to address the mayor and city council.
I believe I am unmuted.
Yes, you are.
Well, I'm here to speak in favor of the anti-demolition ordinance. I believe that I will be heard when the ordinance comes up for discussion. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Casper, this would be the most appropriate time for your comments. That's not subject to a public hearing, if you'd like to go ahead and say them now.
I was, I just heard you say that you cannot discuss an item that's on the agenda, and I spoke to a clerk earlier and she said I would be speaking in favor of that resolution. Shall I read what I have written now?
Yes, that would, that would be great, because it's only if it's a public hearing and this is just another item that's on the agenda, so if you could go ahead and read it now, that would be great.
Well, I will read it, but it won't make much sense, because we don't know what the anti-demolition ordinance is, but I will proceed. Some years ago, in the College View neighborhood, on the southeast corner of Holly and Fourth Street, there was a nice old historic house. Over the years, this house was slowly being allowed to go to wreck and ruin. Eventually, it was demolished. If, if this ordinance had been in effect, this house might, could have been saved. If you take a walk in College View, particularly between Fourth and Fifth Street, one can find many similar houses that are looking like they could use some protection that this ordinance could provide. Thank you. That's the culmination of my remarks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Casper, we appreciate it. I'll check with the clerk one more time. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
No, sir, that, that is officially the end of public comment speakers.
All right, we will officially close the public comment period, and we will move on to special recognitions. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It is my delight and honor this more, this evening to recognize Gary Fenton, who is our retired Recreation and Parks Director. Mr. Fenton, if you could wave? He can wave. I'd just like to tell you just a little bit about Gary. Gary began his career in Recreation and Parks over 50 years ago and, and retired in April after serving the last 14 years as the director of the City of Greenville's Recreation and Parks Department. There have been numerous significant additions in programming and facilities under Gary's leadership, including the beach volleyball courts, camping platforms along the river, the Dream Park with the city's first splash pad, the Drew Steel Center, the Field of Dreams at Elm Street Park, Greenway Expansion, Live United Park, Rivers Edge Park, South Greenville Recreation Center renovation and expansion, the Tar River Master Plan, the Town Common Master Plan and amenities, including bathrooms, inclusive playground, new boat ramp, fishing piers, kayak launch, Sycamore Hill Gateway Plaza, West Point Park, and Wildwood Park. It's a very extensive list. The groundwork has been laid for additional major projects as well, including the construction of a new community pool and renovation of the EBS Recreation Center. Gary's passion, energy, strong work ethic, and sense of humor made him a treasured member of our city team. Please join me in thanking Gary for his service to the city and wishing him well in his retirement. Thank you very much, Mr. Fenton. We, we, we did present your plaque at your retirement going away, but again, we certainly want to thank Gary for his long and service to the City of Greenville. Thank you.
Congratulations, Gary. We appreciate it.
If I, if I could comment, Mayor, just, that was a wonderful list and all that. My career has given me a chance here and certainly in other to see what a difference something like that can make, and I appreciate council's recognition, probably more so than, than any other council I have worked with in those 51 years. I've, I figure I've been to 900 council meetings. You, you, you understand probably more so than others that I have encountered, that it's an investment and that there's a payoff. I will comment that the last, my last day on the job was April the 9th, and I, that day stretched into night, because it was the opening of the Greenville Little Lakes season, and so I spent that at Elm Street Park up until about nine o'clock, and, and I remember thinking, as I had before, this park continues to serve this community year after year after year. And I'm sure the people that fought for it years ago maybe had a battle, maybe there were people that said it's a waste of money, but fortunately, they did not prevail. And I look at Wildwood that we're working on today with your support, and it's going to be the same kind of thing, it's going to have impacts that far outlive us. And I am very, very grateful for those, those last 14 years. It took me a while to get home, some people say I took the long road to Greenville, but I'm certainly grateful for the 14 years I've spent. I thank council for your support and encouragement, as well as my boss and his boss and lots of the people we work with, including my staff, some outstanding folks on my staff. It is a team effort, and that support, all those things that were listed there, wouldn't have happened without a lot of support from a lot of people, including the mayor and city council, and I am very, very grateful for that, and I thank you so much, it's been, it's been great. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary, we appreciate it. We, we thank you for all the years of service that you provided for the city, and your legacy will continue to live on, and, and all the great attributes that you have will be passed on to all the staff, and, you know, I know Don has, has really appreciated working under your wing and continuing your good work now as the new director, and we're thankful that you're not going far away, you're going to stay close to us. Thank you, Gary. All right, we'll move on to appointments. Madam Clerk?
First board that we have is the Environmental Advisory Commission. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I would like to appoint Thomas Trevathan, please.
All right.
Does that require a motion or a second, or is that just a direct appointment?
That requires a motion and a second.
I will second that motion.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
All right, motion passes, Mayor, five zero.
Thank you very much, congratulations, Mr. Trevathan.
Next board that we have is the Housing Authority, and that is Councilmember Litchfield's appointment, so we will check with him next month for that. The next board is for the Human Relations Council. Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
All right, I'd like to appoint Mr. Kevin Cruz Torres.
That does require a motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tem Glover, seconded by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell? Councilmember Bell? I can come back. Councilmember Smiley?
Aye. Hey, this is, this is Councilmember Bell, for some reason, my iPod's disconnected.
Okay.
And aye.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, Mayor, five zero.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to Mr. Cruz Torres.
Okay, next is the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
I believe I have one appointment and one recommendation of the county. The appointment would be for Shamika White, please.
That's the other one.
Can we do both? And then the recommendation to the county, Kristy John, please.
I second those motions.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Meyerhofer, seconded by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, five zero.
Thank you very much, congratulations, Ms. White, and I believe it is temporary. Congratulations to Ms. John.
Yeah, okay, next board is the Recreation and Parks Commission. The first appointment is Councilmember Smiley for Darryl's seat.
Move to reimport, reappoint Gordon Darrow.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, seconded by Councilmember Daniels. All in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, five zero.
Thank you very much, congratulations, Mr. Darrow.
Okay, next seat is for Mr. Darren White, that's Councilmember Daniels.
I'm going to reappoint Mr. Darren White.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call in the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor, five zero.
Thank you very much.
Uh huh, next seat is for Ms. Carrie Watson, Councilmember Meyerhofer.
I'll continue that, please.
And the last seat on Wreck and Parks Commission is for Mr. James Yonker, and that appointment belongs to Councilmember Litchfield, so we will check with him next month. And youth council, Mayor Pro Tem Glover?
Youth council, did I get one for that one?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so we'll, we'll carry that on, because it's just about summertime now, and the students will be taking trips and things like that, so we'll, we'll do this one a little later.
Okay, Mayor Connolly, that concludes tonight's appointments.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to new business, which are the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the city council, the petitioner, or representative of the petitioner, and a leader of those in opposition will each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the city council during discussion. Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor, in accordance with the adopted policy of the city council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or council members during, including expressions of support or disagreement verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager, our first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number three, the first public hearing is an ordinance to annex the Klein W. Barber Jr. and Edna P. Barber property involving 1.580 acres, located along the southern right-of-way of Dickinson Avenue extension and 1,180 feet southwest of Frog Level Road. Chief Planner, Shontae Gooby, will have the presentation. Ms. Gooby?
I am going to share my screen. Okay, I hope you all can see it.
Can.
Okay. All right, this property is located in the southwest quadrant of the city. It's specifically located along Dickinson Avenue. It is east, I mean, excuse me, rather, it is west of Frog Level Road. The current city limits is shown in green, the subject property is shown in red. This property will be located in voting district number two. It's the current location of CW Auto Sales. It's in the Greens Mill Run watershed. Tax value is $143,000. This is the tiered growth map that's in the Horizons Plan, and it is located in a preferred growth area. And this is a survey of the property. It is one and a half acres, and again, it is already a developed lot, it has tax value of $143,000, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Gooby. Are there any questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in favor of this item. And I'm looking in the public input inbox, and I do not see any items or any comments in favor of this item either.
All right. Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition of this item, and again, looking at the inbox, I do not see any comments in opposition either.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed, open for board discussion. Seeing none. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of the public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the city council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. And as a reminder, the council will intend on voting on this item on the recessed meeting that will reconvene on May 17th at 6:00 PM. Madam Manager, our next public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number four is an ordinance requested by Colless Moore Jr. to rezone 1.4854 acres located at the northwestern corner of the intersection of Diamond Drive and Sapphire Court from unoffensive industry to heavy commercial. Again, Ms. Gooby.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen. One second. There we go, all right. This rezoning is located in the northeast quadrant of the city. It's more specifically located in the Lake, Lakeview Industrial Park. So it is located along Martin Luther King Jr. Highway. It, just to the north of it is Agro Supply. So this is a photograph, again, this is the bypass facing east, so the property would be in on the left. This is a survey, it is almost one and a half acres. The property is currently vacant. You can see there are other commercial uses, which are in red, and some industrial uses that are shown in gray. This property is located in the Tar River watershed. If stormwater rules apply, it would require 10-year detention. There is some flood hazard area that will require a floodplain development permit, and then an erosion control plan will also be required. This rezoning could generate a net, a net increase of 50 trips per day. Currently, the property is zoned unoffensive industry, so the lot could accommodate roughly 14,000 square feet of warehouse space. Under the requested zoning, which is heavy commercial, it could accommodate about 3,000 square feet of automotive sales. The future land use plan recommends office institutional along the frontage of the bypass, and then it transitions into industrial, and it's a little hard to see the colors, I apologize. And then there's also is some potential conservation and open space, again, talking about the environmental issues that I just touched on. Also, something else to point out, this is a commercial zoning. Also, something else to point out, this is a commercial zoning, and "commercial" is a secondary use in the industrial character. In staff's opinion, this request is in compliance with the Horizons Plan and with the future land use plan. Staff recommends approval. And at the April 27th P&amp;Z meeting, the commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the request, and I will be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Gooby? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes, all others have 3 minutes.
Mayor Connolly, the first registered speaker that we have for this item is Mr. Scott Baumgartner. Sir, if you can hear me, you have 10 minutes to unmute your mic and address the city council.
Good evening, Scott Baumgartner with Mackdade Associates, here tonight representing the owner and developer. Be glad to answer any questions and appreciate your consideration of this rezoning request.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Baumgartner? Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have 3 minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers for this item, and I'm looking in the public input inbox, and we do not have any messages in favor either.
All right. Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have 3 minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item, and again, looking at the inbox, we do not have any messages in opposition either.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the city council. See, please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. And as a reminder, the city council intends to vote on this item when we reconvene our recessed meeting on May 17th at 6:00 p.m. Madam Manager, our next public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. The next public hearing is an ordinance requested by MQ Construction LLC to rezone 2.385 acres located between Dickinson Avenue and southwest Greenville Boulevard and 600 feet west of Williams Road from RA 20 to R 6. Again, Chief Planner, Ms. Gooby, has the presentation. Ms. Gooby?
This property is located in the southwestern quadrant of the city. It's more specifically located between Dickinson Avenue to the north. You have southwest Greenville Boulevard. Williams Road is to the east. This is Manning Forest Townhomes. This photograph is taken from Dickinson Avenue, so you're looking toward Greenville Boulevard. The particular little strip of property that we're talking about is actually these trees you can see along here. The buildings in the background, that would be Manning Forest Townhomes. The property is just a little over two acres. The existing land use is, currently it's vacant. All the properties that you see in beige are vacant. Yellow is for single-family homes. You do have some multifamily, which is shown in brown. Again, this is Manning Forest, and there's some commercial to the south. The property is located in the Greens Mill Run watershed. It will require 25-year detention. It's not located in a special hazard area. However, jurisdictional stream and riparian buffers are located along the southern property line. Due to the small size of the property, a traffic volume report was not generated. Under the current zoning, this piece of property could yield about five single-family homes. And under the requested zoning, which is R 6, it could accommodate roughly five to 10 multifamily units. I know this looks a little strange as why it's there, and so I want to explain exactly how it got to be that way. Several years ago, the property here to the east was zoned R 6, and this green strip is actually part of this larger piece of property. And at the time, the property on the other side, which is to the west, was farmland, and it was zoned RA 20 as well. So this strip was intentionally left in there to act as a buffer. Several years ago, the piece of property here to the west was zoned R 6. So now you have a strip of RA 20 in between two pieces of property that have the same zoning. So what this rezoning will do is it's going to fill in that gap so that there will be all R 6 zoning. The future land use plan recommends traditional neighborhood, medium to high density. R 6 zoning is part of that character. You look further down to the intersection, you do have some mixed use and some office and institutional uses. In staff's opinion, this request is in compliance with the Horizons Plan and with the future land use plan map. Staff recommends approval, and at the April 27th meeting, P&amp;Z unanimously voted to recommend approval of the request, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Those to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes, all others have 3 minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in favor of this item, and looking in the public input inbox, we have not received any comments in favor either.
Thank you very much. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes, all others have 3 minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item, and again, looking in the inbox, we have not received any comments in opposition either.
All right, thank you. Public hearing is now closed, open for a board discussion. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the city council. Please see the website for instructions on how to submit comments. And as a reminder, the city council intends to vote on this particular public hearing along with the other public hearings when we reconvene our recessed meeting on May 17th at 6:00 p.m. Madam Manager, our next public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six is an ordinance request by Michael Birch Longley Partners to amend Title IX, Chapter IV, Article E, Section 9486, MM 1, entitled "Demolish Dormitory Development Within the CDF UC District" District of the City Code by deleting this section. And the section that would be deleted would be dormitory development within the CDF UC District, and this is the section that would be deleted, shall provide retail sales and/or non-residential uses with a minimum floor area of 10,000 square feet. Ms. Gooby has the presentation for this text amendment, and I will turn it over to Ms. Gooby. Thank you.
All right. This particular item is a little bit of a, not heavy lift, but it has a lot of moving parts to it. So I'm going to move through this one with quite a bit of slides and some information for you. I first want to give you some background about the urban core overlay. And again, so you have the underlying zoning, and then you have this overlay, which is over top of it. So it's called the urban core. This came about in 2010. This was back when, if you've lived in Greenville long enough, you may remember that Kings Row and Greens Mill Run Apartments were located where the province used to be. And at that time, both of those apartments had started to show some age, and a developer was interested in redeveloping the site. However, because of the new building regulations, such as stormwater and some other things, it really didn't make it feasible that the properties could be purchased, demolished, and then redeveloped under, at that time, the density. So in order to get enough units to make it viable, we, the city, created this urban core overlay. The area is specific to only the areas in red, and so it is bounded by 10th Street to the east. This is Greens Mill Run, 14th Street to the railroad tracks. And so this, again, the urban core overlay is only for this specific area. So this area was established, again, that, let me back up one second, I'm sorry. It was chosen due to its proximity to ECU, and it was also recognized, again, that in this area, their housing stock was aging and that the area could potentially be redeveloped, but that the relaxed standards would be needed so that new projects would be viable. So the urban core overlay modified some existing standards. And again, this was to encourage infill and redevelopment as well. So it was going to allow higher standards than the, higher density than the standard zoning. It was going to reduce the setback from the street. So instead of 25, it reduced it to five feet. It also reduced the buffer yard setbacks. It allowed parking to be closer to the street. And all of these things gave more buildable space. So what came out of that was the province. And if you'll notice, the province is 15 acres. It is 234 units, 727 beds. The province is made up of approximately nine buildings. It actually is also part of the property here on the east side. This is Greens Mill Run, so this has some floodplain and some wetlands issues. So the property had to be developed furthest to the west. And so that is, again, one of the objectives of the urban core overlay. In 2016, there was a private request to add dormitory development as a use. So the difference between dormitory is, again, regular multifamily has a series of buildings, such as the province. When you hear dormitory development, you should think of it as a centralized building. Obviously, the dormitory development is going to be useful for very small tracts of land. It also, as part of the modified standards, there was no height limitation. There was 100% lot coverage, so again, you could go from property line to property line. There was a reduced minimum size for the unit size, and there were no open space requirements. So what this formula did was it allowed for more numbers of units than even under the urban core overlay at that time. As you know, Horizon speaks to mixing the land uses, creating walkable neighborhoods, activating the ground floor so that the buildings are not just a single-purpose use. So I want to talk to you about the two projects that did come out of that. The first one is proximity at 10th Street. It was built in 2016. It is on approximately four acres. It has 192 units, it has 609 beds, and it also has about 10,000 square feet of non-residential use. So this is an aerial photograph of the property. This is 10th Street. This would be Krispy Kreme, this is Arby's. You can see the proximity is made up of a centralized building. It has a parking deck within it. Under the standard rezonings, if you took urban core out of it completely, this is about four acres. So under standard regulations, you could get about 68 units, 204 beds. So because of the dormitory development, and again, we relaxed those standards, you got 192 units, you got 609 beds. This is the Jolly Roger. So this started coming online in 2018. It is still under construction, but this was taken maybe two weeks ago, I believe I took it. You've got Charles Boulevard in front of you. You've got 14th Street to the left of you. This is the set of plans. Again, we don't have aerials up to date that's going to capture this, but I just want to show you again, this is Charles Boulevard, this is 14th Street. Again, you have a centralized building. You also have a parking structure here in the center. They have provided a little over 10,000 non-residential space right here at the corner. I'm going to back up just to show you where that would be. So the non-residential use would be right here at the corner. Again, just want to talk a little bit about just the proximity, its location, again, even to the name, to the main campus, and the Jolly Roger, again, these are all walkable to campus. As part of these recommendations, or part of the standards, one thing that was added to this was, is that you had a 10,000-square-foot non-residential space that was required. And this could be anything from retail, restaurant, office. Anything that was open to the public would count to your 10,000 square feet. Also, your parking that was required for that, you got a 25% reduction. So if you were required an extra 100 spaces for your non-residential, you got, you only had to provide 75. And again, this was all in an effort so that the developers could get high densities to make the projects economically viable, but then also the city was mutually beneficial because then that was a way of furthering the principles and the visions that's in the Horizons Plan. So now I want to walk through those very same ideas that, again, were met and are being met in Horizons. And so one of the principles in Horizons talks about the mixing of land uses. So again, instead of having one building that is all residential, you would have a building that has residential and some other uses in it. This also, again, takes advantage of very small building designs. This helps to create walkable neighborhoods. It strengthens and directs development toward the developed areas in the city. And then, again, to encourage the community and stakeholders in development decisions. Then some of the other things, these are policies, support infill and development, foster high-density infill development, promote infill development on the underutilized areas in the core, and encourage development to be located near existing infrastructure. On the Horizons Plan, you see this where we talk about developing, again, of the land closest to the core as opposed to moving to the edges, mixing the different uses. It talks, and specifically, it's just to integrate a mix of uses and connects with the existing developments. This one speaks to Uptown specifically, and these areas are close to downtown, and they actually look and function much like if they were downtown. There's a lot of density, and then these are mixing of uses that's on the ground floor. So it talks about Uptown features a vibrant mix of businesses, residences, education, recreation, et cetera, civic uses, and a distinctive character that's appealing to residents, visitors, and investors. So one thing I did want to point out was, in your staff report, I did make an error in the P&amp;Z's recommendation, so I just want to make sure. On, at the April 27th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 6 to 2 to recommend denial. And so what this means is, for this text amendment, they are asking to take out that 10,000-square-foot non-residential component. And we, as staff, of course, want to, we are recommending denial of this text amendment. We believe it's very important to keep this concept. This was something that, when both of these projects were developed, they were developed after those standards had already been established. they were developed after those standards had already been established. And again, this is a way of, of the city and the developers mutually benefiting. And so, again, we are recommending denial of the request. And I will be glad to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Gooby?
I have one. The, all their, they want to just delete the requirement entirely. They're not asked, they didn't consider asking for a, you know, a reduction in the requirement or something? They just want to line out the, the 10,000-foot requirement?
Yes, this was discussed a bit at P&amp;Z about potentially having more discussion and potentially having some more give and take on that conversation. But at the time, the applicant stated that they wanted to move forward with the request as it was.
They were, were not interested in having a special compromise? They simply wanted an up and down vote?
That's correct. And, and the person who was at the P&amp;Z is also here tonight to speak to that as well.
He's ready to discuss. I guess I'll find out from him. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions for Ms. Gooby? All right. So none of the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has three minutes, all, excuse me, has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michael Birch with Longleaf Law Partners here on behalf of DeWitt, Carolina, as developer of the Jolly Roger project there at 14th and Charles. Before getting into our presentation, and I'll start to share my screen in just a moment. First, I just want to express DeWitt's sincere appreciation for all the help and assistance and cooperation from the city, particularly the permitting and inspection staff who have helped make sure that the project is going to open on time for students in the fall. And DeWitt also wants to express its excitement to be able to bring such an incredible investment to the city of Greenville, contribute to the city's tax base, provide something that contributes to the public realm at a prominent intersection, and will soon be home to 800 students. And also, DeWitt's committed to providing the city with a project that is a net positive for the city while still trying to uphold our commitment to the health, safety, and security of our future residents. And it's, for that reason, and as I'll touch on more, that we are here today requesting this text change. So I am, at this point, going to start sharing my screen. And hopefully you are seeing the title page of the presentation. All right. As noted by Ms. Gooby, we are requesting a text change that would remove the requirement, just the requirement, for 10,000 square feet of nonresidential space in a dormitory development in the CDF UC District. We are requesting this change first and foremost for the safety and security of our 800 student residents. Without this text change, we would need to make open to the public portions of the project, some of the common area, such as our fitness facility. We essentially have to make available memberships to the public. And that presents a safety and security concern, and certainly a health concern as we're dealing with the pandemic. Also, the retail industry market has changed dramatically since this requirement was adopted in 2016. Brick and mortar stores are not as desirable, don't have that demand that they did then. The pandemic has kind of exacerbated the decline of, of brick and mortar stores. But this issue existed, you know, pre-pandemic in this area. Currently, based on the survey of about a week ago, there is over 100,000 square feet of retail space that is vacant within about 1.7 miles of this site. Nearly 70,000 square feet of which is vacant within a half mile of this site, including a lot of the shopping center directly across 14th Street. Want to emphasize the limited impact of this text change. It applies to only two projects, Proximity at 10th and the Jolly Roger. And this is because this standard applies only to those properties that have intentionally gone through the rezoning process to CDF-based district, to apply the urban core overlay district, and then to pursue a dormitory development. And it only applies within kind of the urban core boundary to the extent someone wants to go through those rezoning processes. And again, this does not, this text change would not limit or prohibit the ability to provide this nonresidential space, only remove the requirement to provide that space. Again, this is that urban core boundary. This is the only area in town where you're eligible to apply that UC overlay district. Currently, only two projects have gone through the process to apply that overlay district. So text change does have limited application, that's those two projects. But also, this is the limited area that would be affected if someone else came through the process. And I'll note that it just doesn't, it does not impact the Uptown area. You can see just north of there. These are those two parcels, two projects currently zoned. So I think it's important to note what this text change does not do. It does not impact any, you know, any of the other development standards for dormitory development or the standards for any other development in any other district or area in the city. Doesn't affect anything in the Uptown area. Does not limit, prohibit the ability to provide nonresidential space as a part of these types of developments. Doesn't change the process for allowing dormitory development in this area of the city. Any developer who wants to take advantage of some of the things that Ms. Gooby pointed out is going to have to go through the rezoning process. That means that City Council retains the ultimate discretion over whether to permit this type of development in this area of the city because the applicant has to go through the rezoning process. And they also retain, you also retain, as council, the discretion to essentially require the applicant to provide nonresidential space if it's in a location where you deem that appropriate. So it does also give, again, mention the discretion there for the council. Ms. Gooby talked about how the consistency of this text change with the city's plans, policies in the Horizons Plans, principles. So I want to touch on, you look in the staff report, a number of those policies encourage high-density residential uses in close proximity to nonresidential uses. This area, at 14th and Charles in particular, but this urban core boundary, that high-density residential is still have the right policy choice where you want to locate density because of the existing retail within that area, proximate to that area. The policies encourage that compact infill development on underutilized sites. Again, this is still consistent with that. All we're saying is we're not going to mandate vertical mixed use. And I'll note that the policies don't mandate vertical mixed use. But they do certainly encourage locating residential near retail, which is what we're still doing even with this text change. And so, again, just to reemphasize, and we are only asking to remove the requirement of that 10,000 square foot nonresidential. As I mentioned, because any project dormitory development in this area has to go through the rezoning process, so council retains that ultimate discretion. The health, safety, security of the student residence is compromised by the requirement that the public have access to portions of this building. As an example, I mentioned, you know, again, Ms. Gooby showed, this building is built. And so the area that you saw in that picture has, you know, inside that area, much of that will be kind of the fitness gym area for, as an amenity for the residents of the building. In order that, for that to qualify towards that 10,000 square foot nonresidential space, the developer would have to make available that area open to the public, available for memberships. Also, they've got a kind of a cafe area as an amenity there for the residents, which would need to be made open and accessible to the public. And so really, the driver of this text change is, you know, if adopted, would not, we would not have to make those spaces open and available to the public. But I, I still want to note that what's been developed meets the city's goals in a lot of ways. You have this kind of high level of transparency along the sidewalk, an enhanced pedestrian experience. You have amenities for the residents. And you've also located density in walking distance to a lot of the existing retail. You know, this is, this development is going to contribute to the success and the vibrancy of Uptown. And then last, there is a significant amount of vacant space in this immediate area, including in the Uptown area. An additional space on the ground is going to compete with the Uptown area. It's going to compete with existing vacant space. And so we think that this text change is consistent with the city's plans and reasonable and in the public interest. So with that, kind of conclude our presentation. I do want to, and I'll stop sharing my screen. And if okay, I wanted to address one of the questions raised by council member. So a couple of the planning commission members did express a desire or ask whether we wanted to, you know, kind of engage in a conversation about, you know, is it something between zero and 10,000 square feet? Because of the planned opening in August for students, we wanted to move on to this stage of the process and have this, you know, have the conversation with council. And so I think we can have that conversation here. But at the same time, so much of the space that's in the Jolly Roger are kind of common areas for the residents and would require, be required to be open to the public. And so, specific to the Jolly Roger, I'm not sure that there's a number between zero and 10,000 square feet. But we have some time now between, you know, between now and when you need to make your decision to follow up on that issue.
Thank you very much, Mr. Birch. Is there any, are there any other questions for Mr. Birch? I also want to make a note that, that Mr. Birch was under the 10-minute time period, and he did use a little bit over the 10 minutes, but he was using it to answer a question from council member Smiley. So do you want to know?
Lot more, so they'll get more of a chance.
All right. Councilor Smiley.
So you said, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. You said, um, you're, you said that your, your willing, your consideration about the compromise piece was that, specific to the Johnny Roger, that was, to your building, there was no different, no, no compromise position. So your, this text amendment is written solely for, to serve your property? There's, it's not written for the purpose of serving properties throughout the district?
Well, again, I, I'm involved in this one specific project. I think a lot of, you know, and there is something specific associated with the Jolly Roger project that is driving the need in this moment for this text change. I think, based on some of what you all have seen at the council level where projects who haven't been in the CDF UC District but have, you know, prior negotiated the requirement for some retail nonresidential space have come back to council asking, you know, to change that. I think that this text change, you know, does have, I'll say, a broad application in terms of serving more than just the interest of the Jolly Roger project in terms of removing that requirement for the 10,000 square feet. Because it's-
So that was my question. Have you, have you considered, in the crafting of this amendment, what, how a number might be applicable to the whole district rather than just to your project? And it sounded like earlier you said you had not because your project had no place in between zero and 10,000 square feet. And so you just had not, if you hadn't written it for the interest of the district as a whole, you zeroed in on what your project needed. Is that the, is that a fair summary of your, your process?
I would say that, yes, our, my client has had conversations with other developers in the city who either have gone through the process or have gone through some other process to where there was a discussion about retail being required. We haven't had a discussion with those other parties about what number might be appropriate to them. And so for, yes, for the Jolly Roger, I think that number is zero.
So that, so you're saying the text amendment is, you have not, with that, with regard to the square footage, that you have not attempted to draft it for the district? It's been solely focused on the Jolly Rogers needs?
That, that's correct.
Okay. The, the second thing is, can you go, you said that this change would be in the public interest? And it, can you explain more in, more specifically how the public interest is served by keeping them out of your building? I mean, what is the, what is the danger to the people in the building if the citizens of Greenville come into the building?
Right. So from a public interest standpoint, the, the idea of having high-density development generally in this location is a, I think, a positive for the public. To be able to locate more potential customers in, in a walkable distance to Uptown and to existing commercial, we still think that that is the right policy. But it's not necessarily in the public interest to, when you have, have a glut of vacant retail space, to put more of that vacant retail space on the ground because that doesn't necessarily contribute to the public realm. And I don't know if it's necessarily, this is for y'all to decide, in the public interest to continue to add space in this area that is going to compete with maybe more of the commercial core to the north. The quote-unquote, you know, kind of safety concern with members of the public is, again, when you're dealing with a dormitory, the level of security, access, et cetera, I think is heightened even over and above that of maybe a, just a regular multifamily development as opposed to one that's more focused on students. And so having space that is open internal to the building makes it difficult to control access to other parts of the building, whether that's through the gym facility or through kind of a cafe area.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of places around town that have mixed use with, are those, you're saying those buildings are dangerous? Or your, or your building would be safer than they are because?
No, I, what I'm saying is, the way that this building was developed is different than some of the other spaces. I think if you look at the proximity, there isn't any access into the building from, directly from those public-facing spaces. So I think there is something unique about the Jolly Roger and how that space was designed.
Isn't that, isn't that an argument you have with your architects? I mean, they designed the space, the rules were in place when they designed them. They apparently didn't do it well, and you're coming to city council for a remedy? Shouldn't you be talking to them about why they designed the, your building so that it would be unsafe for the public to come in? When you knew that 10,000, that you were going to have to provide 10,000 square foot of space for public use?
Well, so that leads to a discussion that we had with city staff, city attorney's office, ultimately did not pursue for timing issues. But what the code says is nonresidential space. There's not a requirement in the code that says that space has to be open to the public. Code defines nonresidential space as space other than residential dwelling units. So going through the project or going through the- So going through the project or going through the entitlement process, the space that we, was being provided to meet that 10,000 square feet was not initially intended to be open to the public. We then hit a point in the project where that interpretation issue, we could either resolve it going through Board of Adjustment, other avenues, or get through the point in the process that we needed to get through and attempt to solve it a different way.
Ms. Scoob, Ms. Scooby, can you speak to that? Where the, was the applicant misled about the requirements for 10,000 square feet of publicly accessible space?
And I want to be clear, I'm not saying that staff misled. So I do want to just clarify that. That's not what I was-
I'm sorry. When you said you had talked to staff and the attorney and our planner, I thought you said that they had-
No, we had a different, we had a different interpretation than staff's interpretation. And instead of stopping the process that we were in, which at the time was the site plan process, instead of stopping the process there and having to resolve that disagreement through Board of Adjustment Interpretation Appeal, we needed to get through that point in the process and have to resolve, find a different way to resolve that issue. So-
Okay, then I'll ask the question a different way. Isn't your problem with your, isn't your client's problem with their attorney who misinterpreted the rules? And so why is your client coming to us for, for a remedy when they should be talking to their attorney about misinterpreting the, the rule, the development rules under which they were working?
No. So I may, I apologize that I'm not being clear. So we had a disagreement with staff over the interpretation of that section. And developer made the decision that instead of fighting that interpretation through a legal process, that they would instead continue on the development path and see if there was another avenue to address the issue.
Ms. Scooby, um, can you, you know, at what point did you, was it become clear to staff that they, what they wanted to do was not permissible under the rules? Or did they, when did they approach you about this?
What I can remember of a discussion of this nature was when they submitted the site plan. And they submitted their building designs to us. And there was some discussion about the non-residential, what that meant, what it had to be. Several, several staff members sat down. We looked at their drawing paint, drawing plans. We asked them specific questions about what they wanted to put there at that specific time. They said they were unsure of what the end users would be in that specific area. However, we did, we, we did impress upon them that any, any of the space in order to qualify had to be open to the public. So they presented us the plan that I showed you, where it shows the 10,000 and little bit, a little bit excess that was going to be their non-residential space. So the plan was approved. That, I guess, would have been 2019, I'm thinking, tail end of 2018. And then for me, there has been no other discussion about this non-residential and what they thought it could be or what it could be until we, till I received the text amendment asking to delete that portion of, of the amendment. I, I can't speak for other staff, but I'm unaware of any more discussion about that non-residential component once the site plan was approved.
I have no further questions. Thank you very much, Mr. Birch. I appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Birch? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Birch. Anyone else would like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers, and I will just check the public input inbox. And we do not have any additional messages in favor of this item either.
Thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward now. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any speakers in opposition to this item. And I would just note that there was one message that was received in opposition, and that was forwarded to this mayor and city council prior to the meeting.
All right. All right. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of a public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. And as a reminder, the city council will intend on voting on this public hearing, along with the other public hearings, when we come back from recess on May 17th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Madam Manager, our next public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is an ordinance to designate the Flanagan-Wagner House, located at 903 East Fifth Street, and further identified as Pitt County parcel number 14352, is a local historic landmark. And I believe that she, Planner Ms. Scooby, has that presentation as well.
Okay. I want to share my screen. See if we can, there we go. Again, this is an ordinance to designate the Flanagan-Wagner House. It is located on East Fifth Street. This house was built in 1938. Both the Flanagan and the Wagners were prominent families in Greenville. The family land came, became home to the hospital, also part of ECU's campus and the College U neighborhood. It's an intact example of 20th century Tudor Revival style. So this house has significance due to the persons who owned it and lived there, and then also the architecture. And then I'm just going to flip through a couple of pictures. So there's some interior pictures. And, and then I think I have a few outside. So this is a sunroom. And so I just want to give you just a little bit of history. The owners came to the selection committee back in July of last year. They presented, or they asked that, or I should say, they were interested in having their house designated. The selection committee recommended that they pursue the survey and report. Back, and then July 27th, the selection committee presented its recommendation to the Historic Preservation Committee. And then in January 26th of this year, the Historic Preservation Commission unanimously voted to accept the survey and research report, and then to forward it to the State Historic Preservation Office for review. And then in February, the shipo office advised that the Flanagan and Wagner House has the required significance and integrity to be a local landmark designation. On March 23rd of this year, the Historic Preservation Commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of this request. And I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Scooby? Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. State your, your name for the record, please. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, first registered speaker that we have for this item is Ms. Sarah Larkin. Ms. Larkin, if you can hear me, you can unmute your microphone, and you have 10 minutes to address the mayor and council.
I, I'm, I didn't realize that I was supposed to speak to this, but I'm certainly pleased that the efforts that we made to, to restore this property on Fifth Street are, are recognized, and that our, our Tudor Revival House is being considered for a local landmark. So we appreciate that the Historic Preservation Commission and the State Historic Preservation Office have, have found us, found this house worthy of this designation. So we're happy to, that it's being brought to, to city council.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
I just wanted to thank her for sharing the history of her property with the, with the city. That's, it's a neat thing, and it just tells us, tells us about, you know, where we came from and, you know, how we got here. And I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Mayor, Mayor, do we have a picture of the house? Is it on Fifth Street?
Dante does.
All right. Oh, we saw that. Okay. I think I saw that when she went through. I didn't remember. But it's a nice, beautiful house.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Those who speak on behalf, anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any additional registered speakers in favor of this item.
All right.
And looking at the inbox, I do not see any messages in favor either.
All right. Thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item. And once again, looking in the inbox, we have not received any messages in opposition.
All right. Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to this camp, city council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. And as a reminder, the city council intends to vote on this public hearing, as well as the other public hearings, when we recess this meeting and reconvene on May 17th at 6:00 PM. Madam Manager, our final public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. The final public hearing is a public hearing for the 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan for CDBG and Home Funds. And I'm sorry, Senior Housing Planner, I'm so sorry, Tiana. Senior Housing Planner, Tiana Berryman will provide that presentation.
All right. Thank you. Okay, I will share my screen. Let's see. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm here for the 2122 Annual Action Plan Public Hearing. The Annual Action Plan, as you know, outlines the intended activities and resources the city will manage that are in line with the goals of the five-year consolidated plan. It serves as the application to HUD for funding for both CDBG and home programs. And this is Plan Four of Five for our 2018 to 2022 plan. So we are rounding third and about to wrap up that five-year plan. So far, staff has held a series of community input meetings, beginning in the fall of 2020, and staff is preparing to submit the approved plan to HUD in the coming days. So we've seen a slight uptick in funding in CDBG and a fairly-
I'm sorry to interrupt, Tiana. The slides don't appear to be moving.
Okay. Um, let's see.
If you'll go to the bottom and hit the, hit on the space bar, the-
It's moving on my end. Um-
But that, that's okay. Just, just, just continue on, Tiana. I'm so sorry.
Maybe there's a delay. I'm not sure if, um-
Yeah, display it. I mean, do a, set it on, on presentation mode, F5.
Mm-hmm. It is, um-
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure. I'm, I'm seeing it on display mode on my end. Let me, I'll, let me stop sharing, then I'll, I'll see if I can go back in. Okay, let me try again. Okay. Do you see it moving now?
Hit, hit, hit the next slide and see if it moves.
Still nothing.
I think it's our friends from the HBC that are messing with us.
It's okay. It's okay.
Let me try maybe in a different view. Are you able to at least, can you see this?
Yes.
We can see that now.
Okay. All right. We'll keep it right here. Sorry about that. So like I was saying, we've got a slight increase in CDBG funding, a fairly consistent allocation at home. So we're expecting a total of just over $1.5 million for both programs combined. And this does include anticipated program income. But any activities that we have that generate some sort of income, those dollars are reinvested in the community through existing programs. So you'll see an, an anticipated program income allocation, or program, anticipated program income to the tune of about $30,000. That's pretty standard. That's what, the number that staff has been using for the past several years. And it seems to be pretty in line with program income that's received through our rehab program. Okay. So the total budget for projects includes a continuation of existing programs, but does not include CARES Act funding or some other programs that were identified in the previous plan. If you remember, we, we saw the 2020 and 2021 Action Plan presentation several times last year because of the continued amendments with CARES Act funding. And we did receive those funds pretty late in the year. I believe it was the end of January, early February. So we're really just getting started with those activities. You won't see that reflected in, in this budget, but we absolutely anticipate to carry those activities out into the 2122 year as well. Okay. So our action plan priorities include continuation of our owner-occupied rehabilitation program, education and support for nonprofits, our CHODO activities, down payment assistance, and new housing construction. All right. So our owner-occupied rehab program, this is citywide, and receives about 45% of the total allocation. Staff intends to continue the rehab program, but also make improvements that will adjust to changes in the construction industry and still balance the needs of the community. So as we know, construction costs are significantly higher than they have been in years past, and a $1,000 cap does not go as far as it used to as before. So staff is looking at opportunities to make some improvements to the program, to allow, to allow our homeowners to receive the same level of service, if you will, the same amount of, of, of changes, substantial changes to their units without being impacted by some of those additional costs. So staff will be reviewing options for making improvements there. And we're also looking at recruitment of additional contractors, because this is one of our most popular programs, and there's a lot of demand. Okay. The Affordable Housing Loan Committee has reviewed, interviewed, and approved the applications and agencies listed here, and made the following recommendation for nonprofit funding as part of our subrecipient program. So these nonprofits, we're looking at a budget of about $140,000. It's worth noting that with staff's recommendation of full funding for the nonprofits due to the constraints, restraints of, you know, budget, agencies receiving fewer dollars, having more demand as a result of things that are going on right now, the Affordable Housing Loan Committee did approve full funding for all nonprofits. We were able to increase our budget. Usually we have a budget of about $100,000, and it causes us to make a recommendation for awards that are less than what is requested. But because all of our nonprofits were not able to extend their full budgets last year due to being closed down for COVID and things like that, we're able to roll those dollars over and allow for increased funding. So we're hopeful and excited about what'll be able to happen through our nonprofits. Okay. Our community housing development organizations, our nonprofit developers, and a HUD-required partnership, the staff is looking to recruit, help build capacity, and invest in ongoing development, specifically in West Greenville. Just for information purposes, the units that you see here that are under construction are now completed. And owner-occupied, these units are along Bancroft. So they're part of our Lincoln Park project, and we are looking forward to creating, establishing relationships and continuing relationships with eligible nonprofit developers to continue similar projects. Okay. And we recognize that it is, we're in a buyer's market when it comes to the housing market. There are attractive interest rates, and we just have a lot of individuals who are interested in purchasing homes. We are working with a lot of first-time buyers. We've gotten a lot of interest from the units that were completed along Fleming Street. So we're, the staff is looking to continue the 20% home down payment assistance program. It's currently up to $20,000. It does allow for subsidy layering with some other programs to increase the, or excuse me, to reduce the amount of financing required by these home buyers who participate in the program because they do have to qualify for a mortgage on their own. So we are looking forward to supporting buyers, first-time buyers specifically, with down payment assistance. We've increased the budget for this item as well because we believe that it will pair well with priority number three and what I'll get to number five. As we look to increase new construction. So we are hoping and planning for a Phase Two in our Lincoln Park area for a city-sponsored new development. We were able to support our buyers with down payment assistance for the first four units and the Greenville Housing Development Corporation project that was also in that area. And so we look forward to making available down payment assistance to support first-time buyers for some additional affordable units in Lincoln Park. Okay. So I am available for any questions or comments, and staff recommends holding a public hearing for the 2021-2022 Annual Action Plan.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Berryman? All right. Seeing none. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we do not have any registered speakers in favor of this item. And looking at the public input box, we did not receive any comments in favor of this item either.
All right. Thank you. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Mayor Connolly, we did not have any registered speakers in opposition to this item. And looking again in the inbox, we have not received any comments in opposition either.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion. Has anybody been able to get Bill Clark Homes on the hook for any more houses?
We are certainly interested in having conversations with developers in the area. We have not confirmed any plans other than staff reviewing the feedback that we received from the first phase, and we will use that information to inform decisions going forward.
Thank you. All right. Pursuant to Senate Bill 704, the public has 24 hours after the conclusion of this public hearing to submit written comments, and such comments shall be forwarded to the council. Please see the city's website for instructions on how to submit comments. And as a reminder, the council intends to vote on this item as well as the other public hearings discussed tonight when we reconvene our recessed meeting on May 17th at 6:00 PM. That is it for our public hearings. We'll now move on to other items of business. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We now have presentations of the proposed fiscal year 2122 operating budgets for the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Authority, Shepherd Memorial Library, and Greenville Utilities Commission. I believe that the Director of the Pitt Greenville Convention and Visitors Bureau, Visitors Authority is on the line, and I'll call on Andrew Schmidt. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thanks so much for having me this evening. Before we start, just want to thank the city for their support over the last year. It's been an interesting year for travel and tourism with the pandemic. Recognize Brian Meyerhofer. He's our city council liaison. So thank you, Mr. Meyerhofer, for all the meetings you attend, and also Monica Daniels, who serves on our Sports Commission's Advisory Board. So thank you to you both for your service to the CVA. So let me share my screen and see if I can get that to come up. You guys should be able to see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right. So just a few things about our mission at the Convention and Visitors Authority. We're here for a couple of different reasons. First and foremost, we want to foster an environment of superior travel and tourism experiences. The two key words there are environment. We want to make sure that we have a welcoming and inclusive environment in Greenville, and also experiences. So we want to make sure that people are having fun, positive experiences they can take home with them, to share with their family, friends, and all over social media. So that's why we're here. Of course, we're also here to create a positive economic impact for Greenville through travel and tourism, bringing in our meetings and our conventions, our sports tournaments, our family reunions, certainly our leisure travel. So we want to make sure that we're bringing in those outside dollars to support the city and the local businesses as well. So just as a reminder, we are governed by a board. That board has four hotel owner-operators, two that are appointed by the city, two by the county, two hospitality-related positions or positions that are near and dear to hospitality. Again, one from the county, one from the city, four citizens interested in the hospitality industry in general, and two of those individuals reside in the city and two in the county. We have a chamber appointee, a city and county liaison, and then also the city finance officer, Mr. Byron Hayes, serves as our treasurer for the CVA. And I do need to thank him publicly as well. I have called him more times than he probably cares to have answered, but he has helped us through some challenges with lower occupancy taxes because of the pandemic. So I want to thank him publicly as well. So I want to start out and just give you a 30,000-foot view. Tourism is certainly on an incredible trajectory for Greenville and Pitt County. We have made lots of strides in the last several years. You can see in 2015, we had about $214 million spent in Greenville and Pitt County by our travelers. They came in for all this variety of reasons that we've talked about, whether it's convention meetings, major sports tourism reunions. And in five short years, we ballooned that up to about $275 million. Before the pandemic hit, we were looking at possibly having a year in 2020 close to $300 million expenditures. We had a record year set, and unfortunately, the pandemic hit, and that certainly changed some things in our industry here in Greenville. So I did want to share just a graph with you to talk about the overall effect that the pandemic has had on the travel and tourism industry, and specifically the lodging industry in Greenville and Pitt County. So this chart has three different color graphs, bar graphs. The blue is our occupancy bar. And basically, since the pandemic has hit, we've lost about 26% of our occupancy average per month. And that's quite a lot for any destination. The red bar shows the ADR, which stands for average daily rate. And so during the pandemic, our hotels here in Greenville have been charging about 16% less for their hotel rooms, simply because demand hasn't been there. And then that last green bar is our RevPAR, which is a revenue per available room. And so you see about 37% down in the revenue per available room that a hotel will collect when you look at their whole inventory. So it's definitely been a challenge for our lodging and our tourism over the last year, but I want to share some good news. And that's what I'm really excited about. So just a couple of charts that I wanted to share before I get into our budget to show you where we're heading for our industry for Greenville. This is just a chart that says, you know, who's ready to travel. And this information came out about two weeks ago, and it came from the U.S. Travel Association. And 64.4% of the people that are vaccinated feel comfortable traveling and are ready to travel. And those who are not vaccinated, that's actually higher to a little bit of a surprise, 71.2% are ready to travel once they are vaccinated. And so you would think that vaccinated would be a little bit higher, but there's actually something called travel guilt right now out there. And the people that are vaccinated, some feel guilty for traveling when others can't. But that is quickly changing. So that's a good, good statistic to see. As vaccines continue to get in more people's arms, I think we're going to be in better shape for travel and tourism. One other chart I just wanted to share with you, this shows that people are much more likely to travel. They're not scared to travel. This chart is a little bit hard to see at the bottom, but it goes through every week of the pandemic. And so when you see that high watermark of 69.4%, that was about mid-April 2020, and it has gone up and down, and it went back to up to about 57.8%. When we got into December and January, we'd have another surge after Thanksgiving. But let's look at, you know, what has happened since vaccines have rolled out. It's gone from 57.8% down to 35%. So that graph will continue to go lower, and we'll have more people that are not scared to travel. And that's huge for us. What that means is people are really ready to receive marketing messages, and not only receive them, but act on them, which is important for us here in Greenville. So just going through our budget approval process, what I'm getting ready to share with you, we have already showed to our executive committee for the CVA, and they have recommended to approve our budget to our full board. Our full board approved this proposed budget in March. And then we were in front of the county commissioners last week, and we're here at City Council this evening. So. And then a couple of other reminders. We do not receive revenues from the general fund from either the city or the county. All of our revenues received are from the hotel-occupancy tax. We do receive that tax from Airbnbs, which is certainly a plus. We're not a membership organization, so we don't have memberships, and we don't receive funding that way. We have obviously experienced significant tax decline due to COVID, and also less funding coming in from the Airbnbs. We had about 225 Airbnbs in Pitt County when the pandemic started, and we're in about 115 right now. But they will slowly come back up as vaccinations also increase. And just one other quick reminder, how that funding is divided. The occupancy tax collections, you can see for 2019, 2020, up at the top. But we take those collections, and half of those collections go to the debt service on the convention center, and the other half is divided between the Greenville Convention Center and also what we do here at the Convention and Visitors 30. We get 2/3, and the convention center gets 1/3. So anyway, so let's talk about our current revenues. And this is basically how we're starting to construct our budget for fiscal year 2122. Currently, the occupancy tax revenues are down about 28.3% over last year's collection. Last year's collections were down about 22% from the year before. So you can see it's kind of a piecemeal. The pandemic hit in March, and so we lost some from March to June, and we've lost some this year, obviously. However, the good news is that we are looking at calculating our budget and how we forecasted our budget for 2122. We knew that we would make up some ground in April, May, and June. So we are forecasting a 22% decrease in tax collections, and that's what we're basing our 2122 budget on. Currently, we see that we're 28.3% down, but we know we're going to make up some ground. So we're looking at a 22% decrease, and that's the occupancy tax forecast that we use for our budget. So they are going to be better in April, May, and June than they were last April, May, and June. And also, our average daily rates that we talked about in our revenue per available room numbers are increasing. Our budget that we're getting ready to present supports the following strategic goals. And obviously, the first goal that we have that our budget will support is to assist in economic recovery from the effects of COVID. And we want to restart travel to Greenville and Pitt County. We are forecasting that it will come back in three phases. Travel will come back first in the leisure side, and that's already happened for Greenville. We've got an incredible tracking software called Arrival List, and I think I've shared it with a couple of you guys. But that shows us where people are coming from. And we are seeing a large increase of people coming from the Triangle area and also from our backyard counties just to the east of Pitt County. So we're seeing that leisure travel for us, mostly for outdoor recreational tourism and culinary, come back. The second phase is sports tourism. Back in January, we had forecasted sports tourism to come back starting in June. It is already back. I can tell you that. We are very fortunate that just this past month in April, we actually, our Sports Commission booked 18 tournaments between now and the end of the year. That's a really good sign for us. So sports tourism is on its way back. And I guess if there's one that's not going to come back as quickly, that's conventions and meetings. So we'll look at probably '22, 2022, before those conventions and meetings really start coming back and booking. But we are working very hard to help restart travel into Greenville and Pitt County, and that's one goal that our budget will support. A second goal is to capture that low-hanging fruit, and that's the lost and postponed business that happened in 2020 in both the meetings and sports tourism markets. The groups that we had contracts with that were canceled, we're going after those groups first, and we're having some good success. So any postponed business is on the forefront to get that rebooked for 2022. Third goal that our budget will support is to increase leisure travel to Greenville and Pitt County. And we're putting a specific emphasis on our marketing on outdoor recreation. We were very pleasantly surprised in the summer and fall. We kind of switched our tactics, and we did some marketing with some grant money, and it was all towards social distancing activities and culinary. And we had really good success with our outdoor recreational tourism market. We talked to one of our outfitters on the river, and one out of every two individuals that was kayaking in the fall was from out of town. So people were looking for a way to, A, control their environment, and B, socially distance, and C, we knew people were only going to take day trips. They wanted to be in their cars. They certainly weren't getting on a plane. And they didn't want to stay in a hotel. So the day trips is where we marketed. And we found that most people that had not participated in outdoor recreation did, and they loved it. So we're seeing those numbers balloon. It's actually the fastest-growing leisure market right now. And I think we're extremely well positioned with what we have in our inventory already. And then two additions, the East Coast Greenway, now that the South Tar River is part of the East Coast Greenway. And of course, Wildwood Park is going to be outstanding. That is going to give us a lot of different things to market to the outside of Pitt County community. So we're excited about that. Goal four is to increase leisure travel. And we want to increase our place-making efforts, you know, tie together our community assets, including art, support the Emerald Loop Project as much as we can, culture. We're getting close on our African-American cultural trail, and I invite you to Greenville Grooves on June 18th. Our committee will be out there, and we'll be- Our committee will be out there and we'll be unveiling the logo to the public on the 18th, which will be great and we'll have some other information about the trail as well. And then we also want to highlight diversity and inclusion and we're going to make some aggressive and purposeful marketing efforts to some diverse target markets in this upcoming year. And then the last goal is to commence the process of creating a tourism master plan for Greenville and Pitt County. And that's something that while we may not get done this upcoming fiscal year, it's a process we want to start because we think it's really important for us to start mapping out with, you know, several new hotels breaking ground, you know, two of those hotels in the uptown district. We want to make sure that we're getting the infrastructure necessary and have plans that are going to support all the growth that's going to take place in Greenville. So getting to our budget, we've got a budget set at $1,375,000. The tax collections that we are forecasting to come in are at $775,000. Obviously quite a bit lower than, than what we're used to, but we are very fortunate. We have our sports commission that is supported by the capital reserve account. Then we'll get a little bit more this year from that reserve account for sports commission to help support the Little Lake Softball World Series, which I'm sure everyone knows by now is going to take place. It'll be a little bit different. It won't have an international component. It'll be a domestic tournament, but it'll still be a great tournament and we're really excited. And when I say Greenville's going to be on center stage, I'm not kidding because every game's going to be on ESPN platform. So I'm very excited about that. I want to thank, you know, the city manager and both assistant city managers and again Byron Hayes to help, you know, supplement the losses that we've seen with, with occupancy tax. We're going to be taking an additional $125,000 out of capital reserve and we've got a good plan for that use of money and we'll talk about that in just a second. We were fortunate enough to secure a PPP loan that is a forgivable loan and the timing of when we got that loan, we will be able to transfer those funds into next fiscal year that'll also help supplement some losses. We have some fund balance that we are dedicating to help shore up our budget for this year. There's an asterisk by the fund balance. If we come in above that 775,000 threshold, we can reduce the fund balance that we take. And we're hope, hopeful that that will be the case. A little too early to tell just yet, but we're seeing some really good weekends right now. Unfortunately, this weekend got canceled because of the, the gas shortage. That was unfortunate, but we've got some good weekends lined up that will sell out some of our hotels. And then we have some miscellaneous revenue, which is basically just interest income from our, our accounts. So just some highlights from our budget. We will have full-time equivalents, five full-time equivalents supported in our budget. Before the pandemic hit, we had seven full-time equivalents on our staff. We had two folks retire. We did not replace those, but we have supplemented them with part-time. So currently we have five full-time and two part-time. We are hoping to hire a third part-time to help with our marketing. It is going to be vitally important that we are very aggressive marketing as, as we come out of this pandemic because every other destination will be as well. We also have increased allocating dollars to our advertising and marketing. That $125,000 that we got from the capital reserve, that extra is allowing us to reach our pre-pandemic advertising and marketing levels. And again, that's critically important. We were able to increase our sales related line items to match pre-pandemic levels. And when we say pre-pandemic and sales, we're really talking about, you know, the, the trade shows are coming back, the sales missions are coming back, the media missions are coming back and we need to be on the road and getting in front of these decision makers. So this will allow us to get to the level that we were pre-pandemic. The only thing that, that will not come back is our sponsorship dollars. We'll have limited sponsorship dollars as compared to what we had in 2019. However, saying that, the opportunities are also a little bit more limited because we're still not seeing the level of events that we were, that we would have in 2019. So that's really the, the only limitation that we have with this budget. And then of course, our budget does need to support the convention center and their marketing fund. So we have in our 21, 22 projections, $258,333 set aside for convention center marketing and that's what they are legally entitled to. That is based off the forecast of $775,000 of projected occupancy tax collections for the 2021 fiscal year. The GCC folks will present their budget to our board next week. Their budget for the year is totaled at $385,288. That's obviously well, well above what they'll get, but they have not spent their funding this year. So they'll recycle what they have not spent this year from last year's budget and they will be able to meet their, their budget of 385, 288. They just didn't have obviously the demand for conventions and meetings and they did not have the staff working. So they came, they will come well in, well under budget for, for this current year and they can real, reallocate those dollars. And really that's, that's our budget. I'll be happy to answer questions. Again, we're very thankful for the support that we've gotten. It's been an interesting year, but we are coming out of it and we're really excited and we're tired of talking about the negative and we're excited to talk about the positive.
Any questions for Mr. Schmidt?
I don't really, I don't really have a question. I did want to tell Andrew that, you know, all during last year, because you were the guy sending out a report that compared economic activity this year to economic activity the previous year. You were the kind of the guy documenting the pain and that can have been fun. So we appreciate you keeping, keeping us in the loop all the way there, but I'm hoping that, you know, now that you guys have a brighter tomorrow to look forward to, that you got, you know, that it'll be, you know, be a less painful year for you. But I just want to thank you for all the work you've done, you've done, you know, in terms of keeping your staff together and keeping everything, you know, ready because, you know, you couldn't do anything then, but you absolutely have a chance to do stuff now and we're looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking forward not to sending out those reports anymore.
Any other questions or comments? Andrew, thank you very much. Better days ahead.
Absolutely. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it very much.
All right.
So Mayor, next presentation is Shepherd Memorial Library and I'll call on Library's Director Greg Needham for that presentation. Mr. Needham?
Good evening, everyone. I'm delighted to be able to come before you all once again. I can't believe it's been a year of pandemics since I last zoomed over before council. Hope you can see behind me an image of the main library and a good snow that we had back in, in 2014. And I think that's a beautiful shot. I'll get out of the way for a second. My hologram moved long enough for you to, to see it. But the library's been through a lot of snows, a lot of storms of all kinds, a lot of history. We're now in our 91st year of service to the community. So library opened on October 15th of 1930 and that was, as you can remember, within the first year of the Great Depression. So very scary time for the world, for our country, for our community, and yet Shepherd Library was being built. And, you know, I call it a beacon of hope. It was a positive thing that was happening in the midst of some scary times. And now the library's gone nine decades forward and here we are at something else that has been stranger than fiction, a very challenging time. I tell my staff always that the test of what we're made of is, is how we perform and what we do when there's adversity. What do we do when it's difficult and there are challenges? That's, that's when we show what we're really made of. And I'm so proud of the staff for bringing us through this year, adapting to so many changes that had to come because of the pandemic. And again, we, we also had, as we always do, tremendous support from Anwal and the city management team, all of the city departments, A+ the whole way through, great, great leadership and teamwork. The library board of trustees, Rick Smiley is our liaison to the library board trustees, fantastic board. Again, the, the staff did everything that we could have asked them, asked them to do. And the patrons, people of the community are just glad to have the books. You know, we're, we went through everything from a brief closure to adding curbside service, learning how to do that safely, quarantining materials for 17 hours, 72 hours to make sure there was no COVID on them, which we now know we don't have to do, but to be safe we did. The bookmobile was grounded. Now it's back on the road. Children's staff sprang into action and all of those mini programs from birth up to school age, reading centered programs all went virtual. And so I talk about the silver linings of COVID and things that we've learned during the pandemic that will benefit us going forward. Now we know how to do curbside service and there are some patrons who really can benefit from that even when there's no pandemic. We know how to do virtual programming. So when there are families who, oh, didn't make it today, the baby slept too late, somebody was sick at home, whatever reason, what they couldn't make it to the program, even when we've got a full slate of in-person programming going again, that virtual programming can get it out there to a wider audience who can really benefit from that. So yeah, it's been, it's been quite a year. You know, those, we're backing out of 30,000 books and other items going out the door every month. And the patrons have, have shouldered through the pandemic with us and I, I really can't remember a significant complaint, even with all the changes that we've had from the patrons. And they're glad to have the books. When you think about it, the pandemic year has been a year of technology overload. I don't know if you can agree with me, but I'm always zooming, text messages are coming across, getting all kinds of other messages. I'm getting emails on three different devices. Everything is technology from every direction. A paper book isn't really wholesome alternative to that. So whenever I get a chance, I pick up the paper book and read it. That's an escape from COVID and from too much technology. So library gives you some balance. And I can tell you, all of our efforts on early literacy, we continue to, to put every effort we can into making sure that all children have shared reading from birth so they get all the benefits of, of reading and learning and are hitting the ground running at kindergarten. Greenville and Pitt County continue to have twice the state average of enrollment of eligible children in Dolly Parton's Imagination Library. And that's largely through efforts of our, our collaborators in REEDNCE, our Community Literacy Coalition. So those children are receiving, that's, that's, I think there are almost 11,000 eligible children in Greenville and Pitt County and 65% of them are receiving an age appropriate book from, from birth when they're registered at Biden until they're ready to go to kindergarten. One book a month, 60 books by the time they go to kindergarten. When I taught kindergarten before, I was a librarian very many years ago. You knew which kids came in on the first day and having had reading and which ones hadn't. So you can't, you can't put a price tag on the small investment that goes so far in helping those kids to be able to achieve their potential. So we're barreling on, the library's at full steam. I'm about to share my screen. It takes budget to, to provide library service and got a brief presentation. Let's see if my technology will do what we want it to. Got me?
Yes.
Okay. So there's the library without the snow, which is more often than not. I am going to see, yeah, there we go. The, you'll remember from past years, the foundation of the library's budget is the revenue target that comes from the city of Greenville. You're our largest funder, our greatest supporter and that's what we build the budget around. So that's $1,367,510 for the new fiscal year coming up. Oops, other way. Is this, can you see that or is there a line?
Good.
Okay. So you see that revenue figure at the top, target from Greenville. Pitt County is always funding something like half as much. Okay. That goes way back to the 60s. And they also pitch in an extra bit for the Blunt Library in Bethel and the Winterville Library. That's the 12,000. Town of Bethel, so you'll recall, city of Greenville owns the main library at 531th Street behind me in the snow and also the George Washington Carver Library, which by the way, is Andrew still on there? That's, that should be a stop on the African American Cultural Trail. Okay. The original Shepherd, original Carver Library was on Shepherd Street. How's that? On Shepherd Street and was funded out of the city manager's office before desegregation and when the library was brought into the Shepherd system. There's a huge story there. And the Carver Library now is a brilliant, wonderful shining star there in West Greenville, I believe. So this Carver Library is owned by the city. The East Branch Library with Wreckin' Parks is owned by the city and the main library. And the Town of Bethel and Town of Winterville own their facilities and pay us to provide library services in them. So that's your library system, plus the bookmobile, which is now back on the road, gently broken in because there was a pandemic year, not long after we got the, the new bookmobile. So patrons are delighted to have that back out there. State aid, our state aid funding, almost $200,000, we qualify, re-qualify for every year. We put in a comprehensive statistical report to the state library. They have to make sure that we are meeting all the standards to receive state funding. We always do. Desk receipts, that's where we do fines, copy, copy fees and things like that. Interest income is, is a modest amount of interest on library fund balance and CDs. Miscellaneous income is everything from funds donated for memorial books, gifts, things like that. Greenville Housing Authority, that's a collaboration we have with them for some federal funding that passes through and funds the Moywood Resource Room in the Moywood neighborhood. So kids have a wholesome place for after school homework help and so on. Love that partnership. And a couple of capital items, that Capital County HVAC. So you may recall also that for the main library at 531st only, the county and the city, which have been funding that library way longer than there have been an East Branch and a Carver Library as part of the system, have been funding those in the same kind of partnership. And so this year, the county is giving us $75,000 toward phase two of replacing all the air conditioning units at the main library that are 20 years old. City gave us 150 this year. Okay. So twice as much as the county. So that's that model and they always, the county always comes through on the, the main library at 531st. And the library is also pitching in some fund balance on those two phases. So you remember that it's federally mandated to change out R22 refrigerant air conditioning systems for R410A that doesn't eat the ozone layer. So the main library is just about to have all those changed out. And also in this year, the current year's budget, you also have funding for the Carver Library and the East Branch are also getting their units all changed out. So when we come into a few months from now, we'll have a brand new air conditioning systems at all three city-owned library facilities. That'll get us well past the centennial in 2030 and a decade beyond that. So really appreciate that. The slate roof on the original structure, that's the beautiful slate roof that's pitched behind me. That's actually white instead of slate looking, but we had that, that roof evaluated. Slate keeps like a rock because it's a rock, but even with, with 90 years, there was some, some hard use on it. And the county is giving us $20,000. The city in this fiscal year just gave us 40 and 60 together will make some really great improvements and repairs to that slate roof to give us another 100 years on the slate roof. So really appreciate that. We, we're pitching in $8,000 and change of library fund balance to balance the budget for the new year. And silver linings of COVID, you know, so we're, we've, you know, had, had some staff members, as Andrew talked about, we've had, had some people that retired, retired, that were working for us in retirement as part-time employees. And so we saved some on those costs and those things that would have, would have ended up requiring some additional fund balance or more, more asks from local government are enabling us to get these, these things done. On the expenditure side, personnel costs are always not quite twice what the rest of operations are for the library. Personnel, that's 12 full-time employees, including yours truly and 50 now, part-time employees. In a pre-pandemic year where we had in-person summer reading and hired extra people on, we'd have had 77 part-time employees and we only have 50 now. So we've, we're trimmed down considerably, running lean and strong and efficient, I do believe. And let's see, Greenville Housing Authority, again, that's the past three funds and HVAC, that's just showing the phase two at the main library. The rest of it is all imminent. So that's the overview of the library budget and I'm, as always, extremely appreciative for everything you do in support of your library. I believe the ROI for support of early literacy, books for lifelong learning, books for every interest and every age and a balance to technology overload, you almost couldn't put a price on. I think the, for what, what we bring off and provide library service for is a lot for the money, I do believe. But I'm very happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Needham? No questions.
Thanks very much indeed.
We appreciate it. Thanks for all that you do and keep up the good work.
Thank you much. Take care.
You too.
Okay, Mayor and Council, the final budget presentation will be Tony Cannon, General Manager, Greenville Utilities Commission. Mr. Cannon?
Thank you very much, Manager Wall and Mayor and Council for the opportunity to present our
to present our budget to you. I'm going to try to share my screen now, see if we can get this to work. I'm going to move through this relatively quickly. You had a lot of the materials provided to you ahead of time. But I want to make sure that we cover the status of our current year budget, go over the staff recommendations that we made to the board for the next fiscal year, then go through that proposed budget and then look at it in the context of our long-term financial forecast. So we'll start with our current year budget. As you can see here, uh, we are balanced for the year. All four funds are balanced. We're able to make the transfers in and out that are needed to be made. And the budget is performing as we expected that it would this year. Looking at the total budget this year, our revenues are right at $268 million, being driven in large part by power and gas purchases, which is normally the case. You see what we did in capital outlay debt service, what we have, uh, anticipated that we're turning over to the city this year for the transfer to the general fund, also, uh, transfer into capital projects for our future projects that we have in the four utilities. Key performance indicators remain strong, slightly ahead of budget from last year. I will end the year with 2.9x debt service coverage, 21.5% fund balance, and 130 days cash on hand. Moving on to the proposed budget, we always start with our mission statement to make sure that what we're doing is helping us achieve the mission and the vision of the utility that was adopted by the board and that we've been working on for a number of years. Our budget goals are as they usually are. You know, we want to avoid rate shock. We want to make sure that we're in a good financial position as we go into the next fiscal year and that we're prepared for growth opportunities and also for any emergency situations that would arise. And we want to do this by minimizing rate increases and making sure that we have a good, sound, long-term financial plan for the utility. So our staff recommendations for the next fiscal year, uh, no rate increases across the board. And this represents a 3% reduction from last year's forecast for electric and a 7% reduction from last year's forecast for water. And I'm going to talk about that in a little greater detail when we get to those funds. Uh, doing so, uh, we can still end the year with a weather-normalized budget. Uh, basically, uh, break-even budget is what we try to design around weather normalization. You can see that we're able to do that and also maintain our metrics that we'll cover in just a few minutes. Total budget for next year, we anticipate to be $266 million. And you can see how that's broken down there between purchase power and gas, capital outlay debt service, uh, transfer to the city's general fund, and so forth. The $650,000 transfer to rate stabilization that you see on the expenditure side is to the natural gas rate stabilization fund. Uh, the key performance indicators will remain strong, two, at 2.8x debt service coverage, 21% fund balance, and 126 days cash on hand. And these are the metrics needed for us to maintain our bond ratings. The electric fund, uh, the electric fund is in a, in a good position. $185 million driven in large part by purchase power at $135 million. Debt service coverage remains strong, 3.5x. The fund balance remains strong at 17% and 109 days cash on hand. The electric funding is in a very unique position. Uh, right now, we are, we have a forecast from the power agency that our wholesale power costs will remain consistent over the next five years as we approach the defeasance debt roll-off. It gives us an opportunity to readjust our rates. So we have, uh, presented to the board a five-year plan that better aligns our rates without rate impacts to the customer, without any significant rate impacts to the customers over that five-year period with how we purchase power. Uh, you can see where we, uh, look at the, uh, typical residential bill comparison. We're in, we're in good shape there, slightly below the median. Quick update on the LED street lighting project that we're doing with the city. Uh, we're about 75% done with this. We're in year three of four. We've converted 6,000 of 8,000 street lights. Uh, and we've done some special projects with the police department along to make sure that we're addressing the areas that they feel are of most concern. Uh, one of the changes we are going to be making to our lighting program is that as of July 1st, uh, we're going to need, no longer be offering the HID lights, so the high-pressure sodium, the mercury vapor lights. As of July 1st, if any of those lights go bad, they're going to be converted to LED and any new streetlight or yard light installation will be LED as well. The water fund, uh, here again, we're deferring the rate increase from this year, uh, based on some things that are happening at the national level with regards to infrastructure funding. Uh, we thought it would be prudent to defer that rate increase for a year to see if we can continue to gain ground and see if any opportunities come up out there for us to fund some of those future projects with some grant funding. So the water fund's at two, at $24 million. Uh, it's balanced and we're able to make the transfer to capital projects that we need to and also, uh, cover our debt service for this fund. Key performance indicators remain strong, 3.6x debt service coverage, 21% fund balance, and 140 days cash on hand. A typical residential bill comparison, uh, I will point out that on water and sewer, these rates generally change July 1st because most water and sewer systems are municipally owned and have a July fiscal year. So we will update this, uh, in July, but these rates are as of January. And you can see we're dead on the median when we compare ourselves to others. Sewer fund, uh, sewer fund again, $24 million. Uh, we're funding the debt service that we need to fund and making an appropriate transfer to capital projects. And the fund is balanced. We continue to maintain key performance indicators that are very strong and in line with our bond ratings. 1.5x debt service coverage, 26% fund balance, and 160 days cash on hand. And we're still, uh, very close to the median and very good, uh, competitive shape when we look at our rates on the sewer system. The gas fund is at $32.7 million. It's driven by both operations and purchased gas. You'll recall, we operate an LNG facility that we use for peak storing, uh, peak shading, and we store some, uh, liquefied natural gas there. There's a fairly significant cost associated with that, but it yields a fairly significant savings as well. Uh, you see that we are transferring 650,000 to the rate stabilization fund for gas next year. Key performance indicators remain strong, uh, 3.6x debt service coverage, 41% fund balance, and 203 days cash on hand for the gas fund. And we are right at the median, uh, slightly below by a penny. We're below the median when we look at the gas rates as compared to others. One of the changes that we recommended to the board and they have approved, uh, the preliminary budget is we go to seasonal gas rates. Uh, most of the utilities within the state have seasonal gas rates, which better aligns your revenues and your expenses over the course of a year. Uh, it's a slight reduction to the typical residential bill, but, uh, rates stay very much in line with what, uh, the costs stay very much in line with where they are, and it better aligns our revenues and expenses. So here again, the key provisions in the budget, uh, 0% rate increases across the board, uh, the reductions of 3% in electric and 7% in ga- uh, water from last year's forecast. Continuing on, you see moderate growth in connections forecast for next year. Uh, the turnover, our transfer to the general fund of the city's at $6.6 million. Uh, we will continue to, our investment next year of $500,000 to the Greenville E and C Alliance and supporting the, uh, city's housing energy conservation program at $150,000. Uh, we do anticipate to transfer about 2.5 million next year from the electric rate stabilization fund, but this will allow us to continue our investment and maintenance and expansion of the system. Personnel, uh, as you know, uh, the city and the city council and our board met in a joint meeting and approved 2% employee merit, merit market adjustment for next year. That is in the budget. The continuation of our health and dental plans, uh, the transfer to OPEB trust. And as you know, there's an increase in the local government employer retirement, employer contribution. That goes from 10.15% to 11.35%. For us, that's $418,000. And one thing that we've been doing for a number of years is trying to bring our replacements onboard, uh, to facilitate some succession planning as we have retirements of key personnel that are planned. Do have two additional positions. Uh, one is a controller in our finance administration and the other is a part-time wellness intern in human resources. Looking at all of this in the context of our long-term financial forecast, uh, what I would like for you to concentrate on there is that middle green box, which is our key performance indicators that we need to monitor fairly closely. And as you can see for the combined funds, it is very consistent and very healthy throughout the five-year period. Looking at it fund by fund, uh, you can see that electric stays very healthy throughout the period. We do use some of our rate stabilization fund, as you can see up, up top on that, uh, revenue line. Uh, but our coverages remain strong and the rate increases are zero throughout that period. So we're in a very good spot to start making those adjustments that I was talking about within the rate structure, not the rate itself, but the structure of the rate.
Tony, does the 2025-26 represent just you no longer need rate stabilization or does the fund actually run out at that point?
No. So that is the year that the fund does not run out at that point. So we will still have money in the rate stabilization fund, which will be used for our annual true-up going forward. So by making the adjustments that we're making to the rates, when the defeasance debt rolls off in 2025, there will be a different use then for the rate stabilization fund going forward.
Okay. So it's the rate, it's the debt, the, the, in the change in debt service in that that causes that to change rather than the fund actually running short? Okay.
Yes. Thank you. Water fund, uh, the water fund is remaining healthy. You can see that we're deferring the rate increase for '21 and '22. And even in doing that, we're not going to have to extend these rate increases. So we'll take another look at this next year. Uh, right now, we're showing that a slight reduction in what was forecast last year from 6.7 to 6.6, and then a slight increase the following year, 3.1 to 3.2. But deferring in its entirety to 7% for this time. Our, uh, coverages remain strong and our key performance indicators, uh, are strong as well. Same here with the sewer fund. Uh, the first inflationary increase that we expect would be in the last year of the plan. Uh, but right now, everything remains strong throughout the period and we're able to fund the projects that need to be done, funded in the sewer, uh, utility. Natural gas, uh, natural gas remains very strong throughout the period. We do anticipate some investments coming up out in the '23 to '26 timeframe, that right now, we're forecasting we would need about 2.5% increase in each of the years, '23 and '24, in order to, uh, pay for those funds and maintain our equity ratios that we need to maintain. But as you can see, everything remains healthy throughout that period. Very minimal impact on your residential bill.
Is that, I'm sorry, Tony, I wanted to ask you one more question. You said, and that's assuming, I mean, what is your projection on that terms of like the purch- the cost of the purchased gas over tho- that period? I mean, that would potentially impact the residential bill if...
It would. So this is...
What's built into the model is the...
Built into the model is what our base PGA rate is. So you're, you're exactly right. That rate can go up and down based on the cost of gas. We make those adjustments monthly.
And so if that does, if the market for gas just goes up, then these, these projected res- typical residential bills would go up, but that would be a result of a market change?
It, it would be completely market-driven and not base rate-driven.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, our capital improvements funding plan, you can see here that we try our best to balance, uh, how we fund this. So part of it's funded by cash, part of it is funded by debt. Uh, it helped us maintain the equity ratios that we need to in order to maintain our bond rating. And I will tell you that, uh, we recently received our bond ratings from, uh, Moody's and from Fitch for our bond issue that we're currently working on that we will close next week. And, uh, the bond ratings stayed the same. So we're at A1 for Moody's and double A minus for Fitch. We were able to achieve an all-in interest rate on this bond sale at a right at 1.3%. So it's very important that we maintain those bond ratings because when you're dealing with this much money, I mean, we're talking, you know, $126 million worth of debt over a five-year period, we need to make sure we have very good bond ratings because that really has a direct impact on the rates. These are the large projects that we have in the five-year plan. Of course, the upgrade to the water treatment plant, which is underway, and the dis- distribution improvements, which you're all aware of, which will take place within the next 10 years, uh, that are in there. The, uh, the final building, the training building, and the administration building out of the new operations center. We've got that built in starting in '23. And we're going to start, uh, replacing our peak shading generators there nearing the end of their, uh, lives. And we're going to start replacing those within the next five years. And you see the others there as well, uh, of note, the clarifier improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Uh, the projects to be adopted with this year's budget for our IT department, it's asset management software. So work in asset management for water, uh, the Elm Street Water Main Relocations, sewer, here again, the Elm Street Projects, uh, and then some sewer extensions in phase one and the improvements for in industrial and commercial areas. And, uh, this budget as well for $656,000. So in summary, uh, we're continuing to do the things that we need to do and all funds are balanced. And of course, this is based on weather-normalized, uh, budgeting, which is prudent budgeting for utilities. We're priorit- prioritizing our capital investments and trying our best to improve efficiencies and manage expenses so that we can continue to meet our mission. Uh, all funds are balanced and there are no rate increases in the proposed budget. So the typical bills would stay the same for a customer using all four of our utilities. So we do, we're doing this presentation to you tonight. Uh, we, at our May 20th meeting for the current fiscal year, as you know, you guys adopt budget amendments all year long. We do ours one time a year. So we're taking that to the board next week for our budget amendments, and then that will come to you, uh, along with our budget for approval at your June 10th meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Cannon?
Did, did you really say that your all-in cost of debt was 1.3%?
It was 1.29%. I rounded up.
And how much, how much are you borrowing at that?
38 million.
Oh my gosh. Well, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a, um, that's an outstanding statement right there, just all by itself. It speaks to the quality of your management and the strength of your, uh, your operations. So congratulations.
Well, thank you. We have a great team and it's, uh, been handled well for years. I was not walking into a bad situation, but thank you.
Got a great liaison too, right?
That's right. That's what makes it.
Yeah. I knocked the whole half point off there. Um, it would've 1.3 without me. With me, it was 1.29.
Any other questions for, uh, your Cannon?
Just very quickly first, happy to see, uh, no rate increases. But, um, Tony, you mentioned something about, uh, earlier in the presentation, I didn't want to interrupt you, um, something about, uh, our ability to buy power improving. Did you say that? Did I catch that right?
So what I, uh, what I was referring to, I don't think I said that. But what I'm talking about is, uh, when we sold the assets in 2015, we still owed a lot of money on those assets. So we had to issue defeasance debt in order to retire those bonds. Uh, as, as the agency, we borrowed about $400 million to do that. That debt was spread out over a 10-year period and it will be paid off in 2025. So that puts us in a much more competitive position going forward to make sure that we're aligning our rates and, uh, that we're very cost-competitive.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to the next item. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, um, Chief Planner Shante Gubi will provide a presentation about 160D. It's a new land-use law for North Carolina. Ms. Gubi? Now, you're on mute.
Trust me, I've heard about this law. You're gonna like it better if she just stays muted.
I'm gonna make this interesting and I'm gonna make it quick. Um, the most important thing to remember about 160D, I'm trying to show my slide correctly. There we go. Uh, this was adopted in 2019 by the General Assembly. And so this is new law that is given to us that basically is for us to adopt and to follow. So what that means is, is we, we don't have a, a lot of things to decide. So I'm going to explain to you what all this means. Uh, the purpose behind all of this was to consolidate, reorganize, and adopt consensus reforms. What that really means is that under, uh, North Carolina law, there's actually, uh, somewhat different ways that counties and cities, um, have their laws prescribed to them, even though we do a lot of the same things. We have rezonings, et cetera. But we actually had two different parts, uh, in state law. So what this does is, is this takes county and municipal statutes and it puts them all into one. So it's now going to be 160D. And so again... And so again, what this says is that whether you're a developer or a planner or whatever, the same rules apply whether it is in a county's jurisdiction or a city's jurisdiction. This is good news for, uh, city and county staffs because again, it means the same rules apply. It also, again, just basically consolidated everything for us and, uh, put it in a more uni, uniform order. No major policy changes, but there is some, uh, new language and some clarifying language. It did remove conditional use permits in districts, but the City of Greenville doesn't have those, so that's nothing to really change. Talks a little bit about the planned consistency statements, but as you know, we already have those, uh, in, uh, in our ordinance changes. So again, no big change. I will get to vested rights and what that means. Again, it was just making it easier for folks to understand and it clarified legislative, quasi-judicial and administrative. And I'm sure you've heard those. As a matter of fact, you had a quasi-judicial hearing earlier and it's just putting those definitions into the law. This is not a change for us. Uh, we already talked about the consistency related to Horizon's plan. Vested rights, vested rights are very important because what this does is, is this prescribes the length of time that an approved plan is good for. That's very important if you're a developer because if you get your approval, you want to know how long it will be good. And so this is just a table that shows you what kind of development and then how long it's good for. Conflict of interest, this is one that we've had. Uh, we talk about, uh, you know, uh, if you have a direct substantial or identifiable impact, then you should recuse yourself. It added this other part specifically about zoning amendments or text amendments. And again, um, that you shall not vote on if you, uh, have some, if you are a member that has a close familial business or other associational relationship. And again, we'll get into that a little further, but it just, it, it adds a little bit more depth to the conversa, to the conversation and conflict of interest. This, uh, we've always known, this is part of Board of Adjustment and Historic Preservation Conflict of Interest. However, what it does do is it, it puts it into law as opposed to it being case law that we referred to. Uh, any approvals that were given under the old rules still apply. So now this is going to go to the P and Z next week. They will make a recommendation on it. It will come to you. Um, we have had staff working on this update. We have had, uh, some very smart legal people reviewing this so that it will come to you, uh, correctly. For the most part, what you're going to see in the ordinance are just going to be new citations within the ordinance. There is really not a lot of policy changes for you. So hopefully, uh, you will see this at your June 17th public hearing and I will be glad to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Ms. Guby? Wow, lots of questions. And this is just for our information purposes.
That's correct.
No vote is necessary.
Nine, no vote.
And only a yay vote is acceptable, uh, in June.
There you go. All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 11, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11 is, uh, the Historic Preservation Commission's Resolution for an Anti-Demolition by Neglect Ordinance. Councilmember Smiley asked this to be placed on the agenda, so I will turn it over to Councilmember Smiley for discussion.
I just, when I, when this came through on the email, I, I understand that you can't have these, uh, that these, what is commissioned passes doesn't show up on a council agenda unless one of us offers to put it on there. So I suggested that we do that. I was thinking that we would be an opportunity for, um, uh, maybe if you hear a presentation about what HPC is, is interested in here. I'm told however, that may be moved too quick and that's not necessarily possible yet. So, um, I just would like to move that, uh, staff and the HPC put together a presentation on this project for, um, maybe a June meeting and bring it to us for, uh, um, when there, we have a chance to, you know, get a sense of what they're, you know, what the proposal is and what it might mean and, um, what an ordinance might look like. So I make that motion.
All right. Second?
I'm happy to second it if, if we need a motion and a second. And a vote.
Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Meyerhofer. Madam Clerk, do you and, uh, City Manager Wall understand, I guess, the motion?
I do.
That, uh, a motion to have staff bring back a presentation on the HPC's anti-demolition resolution to council.
And work, yeah, and work with HPC, right? Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Motion's been made. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call the city clerk for the vote.
Okay, Mayor Protem Glover. You're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Okay, Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
All right. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Aye.
Motion passes, Mayor Connelly, 5-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to City Management's report.
I have no report, Mayor.
Thank you. Move on to the comments by the Mayor and the City Council. Let's start with Councilmember Daniels.
I have no comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, I have no comments.
All right. Councilmember Smiley?
Um, I just glad to have you back, Mayor. Uh, in your absence, we had some trouble with, um, gas, um, petroleum being able to drive our cars. And since you got back in this town, apparently that's all been worked out and we really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Bless your heart coming.
Yeah, I'm sure that they're, they've already blamed you, so now about, now presumably they'll give you credit.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. It comes with the territory. All right, thank you. Councilmember Meyerhofer?
All set. See you guys on Monday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Protem Glover?
Um, Mayor, I'm glad to see you back and, uh, I hope your family is doing well. I know it takes a long time to, um, adjust to losing someone and my prayers are continually with you and your family that, um, we all will, you know, be able to, um, um, think of the good times and, um, prepare to cry because every time I think of the good times, I cry. So, um, I just want to say welcome back and, um, and blessings to you and your family.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I heard you did an outstanding job running the meeting on Monday. I heard nothing...
I don't know about that.
Nothing but great things.
Rains did a great job.
Yes, that's what, that's what I was told. So thank you for doing that. Uh, I want to say thank you to everyone, all the colleagues, friends and citizens that reach out to me. It means a lot to me. Um, you know, unfortunately, a lot of us have gone through a lot of heartache over the last year, uh, staff and, and the council and, uh, it's been tough for all of us. And you know, the nice thing about it is I always view us almost as like a nice family. You know, we're always picking each other up and praying for one another and, you know, that, that held to be true, uh, in my circumstance. I just want to say thank you to each of you for everything that you've done. Means a lot to me. It means a lot to my family. Uh, it's tough losing a, a, a family member. Uh, I lost my father who was my best friend and, and my hero, somebody I looked up to, was an incredible person. Um, but you know, like you had said, Mayor Protem Glover, you know, there's a lot of great stories and a great memories. There's tears along the way too, but just focusing on those, those wonderful things and those wonderful memories. And you know, for me, it, I, I definitely want to tell you to take advantage of spending time with your family. Uh, you never know when that time runs out. Uh, you know, never know when you won't be able to say I love you again to them. So, um, make sure that you take advantage of that as much as you possibly can. Um, so thank you to everybody for that. Uh, and then also just want to remind everybody still that, uh, you still, if you want to get vaccinated, you can still get vaccinated. I was very lucky, uh, today to be able to get my last dose of the vaccine. So I am 100% vaccinated right now. Uh, hopefully I will not have any complications this evening, but, uh, please, I walked or I was able to walk right in and get it done right away. So I know Vicent or the Health Department would be happy to assist you and, and get you vaccinated if you would like to. So please take advantage of that if, if that's what you'd like to do. With that, I would need a motion to recess until May 17th at 6:00 PM to vote on public hearing items that we discussed.
So moved.
All right. Motion was made by Councilmember Smiley. I don't know who it was for the second.
It was ladies first.
Yeah, Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay. I'll call the city clerk for the vote.
Mayor Protem Glover?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Bell?
This is Councilmember Bell, aye.
Councilmember Smiley?
Aye.
Councilmember Meyerhofer?
Think I was robbed of my second, but I...
Do it now. Third it. You can third it.
Motion passes, Mayor, 5-0.
All right, thank you very much. We're officially recessed. I hope everybody has a wonderful evening, a great weekend, and we'll see you back.